Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Merrinda.
Here.
Norhuck.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
Vanderwall.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight, Councilmember JR Vanderwall will be giving the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand, and we're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we assemble tonight, and we're in awe of your beauty and your wonder, and we're grateful that we can be here in peace and in civility. We pray that you give us guidance tonight in all we do, in our decisions, in our actions, in our words. We're thankful for so many things, God especially, people who live here, people who work here, our police and fire and safety personnel. We're thankful for each other, and we're thankful for you, obviously. Please guide this meeting. Thank you for -- thankful for this agenda, thankful for opportunities to serve in this community. Please bless us all. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, JR. Appreciate it very much. Well, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. There will be one very small change under the consent agenda for appointments to the planning commission. There were proposed from the planning commission two appointments, one for Perry Hartwell and one for Ray Shadler. And Perry has indicated that she just wishes her term to expire and not to be reappointed. So there'll be an opening there. So with that minor change, is there a motion to approve the agenda tonight? Motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes. Yes. In the opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, April 25. You've had a chance to take a look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? So move.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out in particular? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. You know what? Correction on there. Actually, the minutes were from the May 9 meeting. Note that. Bills tonight. Ken, anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for questions on any of the bills?
They were all fairly routine in nature, just the ones I picked out mainly due to size or infrequency. The Michigan Municipal League dues were there for the fiscal of the year that starts on July 1 on page 1 at 6597. The bill for the newly upgraded city hall sign, electronic sign board, which hopefully you had a chance to notice on the way in, that appeared on page 2 of the invoices. The vendor was posting the signs and graphics. And then, City of Wyoming, the monthly water bill, as well as a small amount that's related to our MIBC grant and our collaboration with multiple communities there under Wyoming's leadership. So everything else seemed fairly normal and self-explanatory, but if there are questions, be pleased to try to answer those.
Great. Thanks, Ken. Any questions for Ken on any of the bills tonight?
Just a comment, I guess. I think the sign looks really good, nice and fresh and clean, and the video board works well, it looks like.
Yeah, the clerk's office staff got training last week, so they're -- I don't want to say they're playing with it, but they're -- probably are to some extent, having some fun with it.
Yeah, same few different things on there. So it looks good. Much needed.
Any other questions for Ken? God, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $280,249.91?
So moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any final comments or questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merrinda.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council, please? Feel free to come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight.
Jason Flanagan, 4323 Paiute Drive, Southwest. Thank you. I'm actually here representing the Environmental Sustainability Committee. I think Jane spoke in front of you a couple of months back. One of our big goals for the year was to seek recognition from Michigan Green Communities for all the great environmental work that happens in Granville. And I'm happy to say, as of last week, Granville is now recognized as a bronze level recipient of Michigan Green Communities Award. Us along with 44, I think it included us, is 44 communities have been recognized, 10 of them at the bronze level, 12 at silver, and 22 for gold. A couple of the items we're being recognized for, I won't read them all, but, you know, our community partnerships with, like, Friends of Buck Creek, Elgro, the recycling events we've held in the last six months, the Green Page that's been set up and information sharing through that and through social media, all of the great work going on at the Clean Water Plant, all of the great work the Tree Board's doing in regards to the tree canopy. We've done some work on energy tracking for city buildings, and we've also created an inventory of all street lighting in Granville. And then, there's been some zoning work done recently that has helped address the use of renewable energy, so we're being recognized for that. I'd already mentioned the Clean Water Plant, but the fact that we issue bills that show usage history allows people to track and adjust their usage. So there'll be an announcement coming out from Michigan Green Communities later this week, sharing all the communities that received an award. So I have some files that I'll share, probably with Marcy, I assume. You know, a blanket template if we want to do our own press release, there's a logo if people want to put in their email signatures, that kind of thing. So, you know, definitely something from the website or the social media, so I'll share that out. Any questions?
Great. Well, congratulations. That's awesome.
Congratulations to us all.
I mean, you have done a lot of work in just a couple of years, and COVID, or the pandemic thrown in the middle of that. So congratulations, and thank you, and JR, and everybody else who's on that. I mean, I love the recycle events, by the way.
Great, great. We're going to do more in the future, so.
Any more questions? Anybody comments? Questions for Jason?
Great job. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up and give us your name and address. Tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Anybody? Okay. Last chance. All right. Move on to the next item. Under ordinances and resolutions, we've got a number of kind of related, all related to the budget. Many of them are related to the budget. The first one is a resolution to amend the fee schedule, and the fees that are affected are like, the first one are the residential utility connection charges and the right-of-way permits and the storm sewer rates. We talked about it last meeting, I believe. So, Marcy, what would this resolution number be?
3275.
3275. Okay. So this is a resolution to amend the fee schedule, various fees set out. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3275?
So moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion, comments, questions? Okay. If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinda.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. So the next resolution would be number 3276, and that's a resolution amending the water and sewer commodity charges and the ready-to-serv charges. They've all changing slightly, nothing terribly dramatic in any of them. We've talked about these before. Like Tammy said, there's a program that puts the charges in. You run the numbers, and you get the number of what the commodity charges and ready-to-serv charges have to be. So Tammy explained that to us at last meeting. So is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3276 regarding the water and sewer commodity and ready-to-serv rates?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any comments, questions? Okay. If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinda.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next resolution would be number 3277. And as I was reading that and the explanation from the Michigan Municipal League, I bet I didn't have to explain it, but basically, it's the headly rollback amount. So what it does is it allows us to charge, or the millage rate will remain unchanged at, what is, 11.05? And but the, under the Truth and Taxation Act, the additional millage rate would be .4265. And Tammy, do I have that correct? Because there's been uncapping of property and additions and subtractions to property.
Yeah, they're saying that we're collecting that much more revenue because of our increase in taxable value, not because of our income and increase in millage rate.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3277? It's a resolution to approve the levy of an additional millage rate.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Any comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinda.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. And the final resolution in this packet of four, which all are related to the budget, this would be resolution number 3278, and that's to adopt the budget. Tammy's done a great job of educating us again this year about the budget, and just, I know, just appreciate all your hard work and hard work of all the department heads, not only in preparation for the budget, but also in just keeping an eye on things and just being very frugal with the citizens' money. So really appreciate that. I mean, we say that every year, and we mean it every year. It's a fact. So I know we're all very appreciative. So is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3278? That is a resolution to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2022 through 2023.
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any comments, questions? Ken, anything you'd like to talk about?
You know, the process seemed to go smooth. It was nice to have some additional revenue from some of the growth, and I think council spent some time making sure that we use that in ways that benefit the residents and the businesses of the city, and that's what it's all about. So I probably should say that Tammy likes the budget so much, she flew across the country today to get here. She started the day in another state, but she had to be here for this. Yeah. But all of our staff does a good job putting this together. She does an awesome job assembling it and walking us through it. The presentation was made at the last meeting for the public, and we'll share some of the information through newsletters and other material as well. And obviously, council's input and direction through a couple of budget work sessions is always a big part of that. So thank you for your time as well. We're looking forward to the next fiscal year.
Okay. Great. Marcy, we had a motion and support on that already?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinda.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next one would be a resolution to relocate the precinct polling location for this precinct from the polling location, which is actually in this room, to the Commons area, the new space in the library, which I think is a really good idea, Marcy, and you and the election committee met. And for a number of reasons. Number one, you have a lot of absentee ballots that you count and process, and it takes space, and you're all.
We're out of room downstairs.
Yeah, out of room and in the basement for the whole day. So this, at least, a little daylight will come in here, so that's nice. And number two, I think it's nice that people are going to be able to go, and if they haven't already visited the new library and the Commons, it's another reason for them to go. There's a couple more elections coming up this year, so a couple opportunities, so makes sense to me. So is there a motion to adopt a resolution relocating this precinct polling location from this very room to the Commons area and the library? I'm sorry, the number would be 3279. Sorry. I heard a motion. Support. And support. Okay. Any other discussion?
Just gives people an excuse to get into the new space in the library and check it out if they haven't. So it's a good plan.
Okay. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinda.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. We have kind of a lengthy consent agenda, and this, because there's a few purchases in there, there's the city hall cooling system replacement. Thankfully, we've had cooler water this week than last week. And also, a portable crane system at the Clean Water Plant. So there's those purchases. But there's also a number of reports, the assessors report for 2021, the Clean Water, DPW, EMS, fire, and investment report, all for April. And then the minutes from the planning commission, they're made for a meeting, and the election commission meeting that we just talked about, and that was on May 19. And also, the appointment to the planning commission, this would be on the reappointment of Ray Shadler for a term expiring July 1, 2025, so a three-year term. And as I mentioned, Perry has decided not to be reappointed, so there's an opening for the planning commission. And then also, a couple resolutions for the social district permit, one from Michigan Moonshine, and the other from Osgood Brewing. And then, like I said, there's a couple purchases in there. At the Clean Water Plant, there's a memo on that from Todd, and that's $16,577. That's for a, and that was, that was a budgeted amount. And also, the cooling system at the city hall for $103,554. That was also budgeted, and I think it was just slightly, just a hair above what the amount that had been budgeted for that. But we want to keep everybody cool, right?
Well, this probably won't keep us cool till next year, based on lead times, which is why we want to get it approved now, but yeah.
So hopefully, you'll be able to continue.
We're going to limp through the summer if we can.
Pray for cold, cool water. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Yeah, comments, questions? Anything anybody'd like to talk about individually in all those items? JR?
Charlie, just real quick, that 16-week lead time, is that pretty industry standard right now? That's, that seems like a long time, but I get it. Everything's kind of backlog, but.
It was nine weeks, now it's 16 weeks.
Just like that. Just like our fire truck, right?
Yeah. We ordered some stuff in November, and it just got installed a couple weeks ago.
No kidding.
Might be a summer here.
I wouldn't necessarily lock in 16 weeks.
Would you have a temporary fix going or not?
We have temporary. Yes, they came in today, and they took out the old freon and put a blended freon in, so we'll limp along.
Feels okay today.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Josh.
This assessment report, I don't know if this is a new report.
It's new.
Yeah, I think it's very interesting. I appreciate it. I think it's just interesting to look and see who some of the high top taxpayers are. Couple of them are no surprise, but a couple of them were actually kind of surprising. Like, I wasn't aware that Consumers Energy owned so much property in the city, nor was I aware that Kent County had so much acreage in the city, I guess. So it's just interesting, but just pass it along to Charlie. Appreciate it. It's good information to be aware.
That's a good segue, because Charlie, the caterer and assessor did ask, this is the first time we put one together, and he's very open to any council suggestion for other information from assessing that the council might want to see, or different formats of the data you've got there. So if you get a chance to look through that and you have any comments, let either me or Charlie know, and we'll make sure. But this is intended to be an annual report that you'll see.
Thank you. Very interesting. Any other comments, questions, anything anybody wants to point out?
Who's ROF, Ken?
Um, ROF? I had to make a note of that one, because I wasn't sure myself. That is the current business or owner entity name for the Granville Marketplace, which is with Hobby Lobby and.
Oh, got it.
That one, yeah. You might also, there's one called Verit Cab Portfolio. Cab is Cabela's.
I believe we have a motion and support. Any other comments or questions? And if not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merrinda.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Ken, city managers report.
Items that fall under that portion of the agenda, the first is one that you've talked about as a council multiple times. That is the city council ethics policy. I forget how many we've had, but I think it was in the vicinity of about four drafts. Five?
Four.
Four, okay. So what you have in your packet tonight is the same version that you saw last time, and we have paused at that point to allow for any public comment that might come on that after we published it and made it available to folks to take a look at. So we've had a minimum of 30 days, a little bit more than that actually, out on the city's website, and a chance for folks to comment. And we got very little back. I think it was copied on the backside of the actual policy draft that you have there. So just a couple of comments, and it really didn't specifically address any of the content. So it's back now for council's final consideration to adopt this as a city council policy. Oh, it does say draft right on top. I didn't even see that. Yeah.
Okay. All right. One of the items, Ken, that you had mentioned in your memo was, although it's probably not necessary, just the idea of every council member signing this, and, you know, council members change, and Marcy would have to keep track of that. But I guess in my opinion, it's probably, I like the idea of everyone signing it, it just causes us to pause a little bit more. You know, like, when we get sworn in, we raise our hand, do we really have to do that? No, but it just solemnizes it a little bit more. And I think just by individually signing, I think that's just a show of good faith and that we're taking it seriously and giving it some thought. So that's my opinion on that. I don't know how everybody else feels about that. Because I'm one of seven, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, it gives more intentionality to it.
Yeah. It's a good word.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay. If not, is there a motion to adopt the Granville City Council Ethics Policy, the April draft, or the draft that we have before us?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Just want to thank Nick in particular for bringing this to our attention. I don't know how long it's been. It seems like it's only been a couple months, but it's probably been like two years, or I don't know when you first.
No, I mean.
Last fall.
Last fall? Okay.
Yeah, definitely less than a few years.
Okay. Well, that's good, right?
If it feels that long, I don't know.
Okay. So thank you. Thank you very much for kind of shepherding it through and keeping an eye on it as well. Okay. Let's see, we've got motion and support on that as well. Any other comments? Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinda.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item, low-income household water assistance program through Kent County.
Tammy put a brief memo into your packet about this and all the supporting material. This is a program that's administered through Kent County Community Action. It's specifically intended as assistance for low-income households that meet a certain definition based on their proximity to the federal poverty standard, and that may be having difficulty making payments for their water and wastewater utilities. It's funded, I believe it's federal funds passed through to the county, so there's not a cost to the city for this, but it does provide for reimbursement to those qualifying households that make application. And it would be for a limited duration, because it is tied to the art of funding. So if council would opt in, it would be effective through September 30 of next year, 2023. And we are aware that there's been at least one application from a Granville resident to this program in particular, which is why it's important to get this out there now. But your approval would allow us to participate as a community in that program, the county administer, and it would not result in additional costs to the city. Miss anything, Tammy, or?
How do people learn about this program?
Well, I'm not sure at this point how the word got out there, but we will have pamphlets in our office, and so if someone calls and asks or tells us that they're starting to pay their water bills, then we will have a number to be able to get them, and then they can, they can apply. And eligibility is determined right through the Kent County Community Action, DHS, and the Kent County work together to determine eligibility. So everything that's in that contract, the treasurer's office is already doing. So it's just one more way to help the citizens if they need it, so.
Just another source of funding, possibly. Nice. Thanks for working on that. Any questions for Tammy or Ken about this program or participation in it? No cost to the city? That's good. Sounds like you're already doing everything that's required anyway, so. Okay. Is there a motion to participate with, in the household water assistance program with the Kent County Community Action?
So moved.[1633.62]
Support.
And support. Other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
North Hook.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Ken, anything else?
Just one thing for City Council tonight, and I don't know where it's wound up, or there's, there it is. There's a signup sheet coming around. Teresa Mendering is working on the final details for the Thursday Night Music, Food, and Fun Series. That'll be on three consecutive Thursdays, June nine, sixteen, and twenty-three. It'll be kind of the first big events to be held in our new Farmers Market Pavilion downtown. So from six to eight PM on those three consecutive Thursdays, the public will be invited to come down. There'll be food trucks, there'll be bands there, and there'll be a lot of free activities that are family-friendly. So the reason there's a signup sheet is this is kind of the new concept for, I guess, two-point, version two-point-oh of the city barbecue, which also had music and food. And so that was, has always been a city council hosted event, and the thought was that council may want to continue to be part of this series as host as well. So Teresa put together a couple of possibilities for folks there on the city council. If you want to be, for example, the host at the bounce house or something, or pass out some of the giveaway stuff, she's got opportunities in short cycles or short shifts there that you can volunteer for. And then also, she wanted me to encourage council, if you had a desire to get involved in any other way, to make sure that you knew that it wasn't limited only to the sheet. So it's just a matter of letting her know or letting, letting us know if there's some other option you're looking for there, and she'd be happy to try to create that. So I know we're all looking forward to seeing how that pavilion functions for us, and this is kind of an exciting way to kick it off with a, a nice series of downtown events. That's it for me.
Great, okay. Councilmember Comments? JR, let's start with you tonight.
Where do I start? One, the, the Ethics Ordinance, or what was, what was the actual word to use? Policy. I love that. I guess how do we, what about signing this? I mean, Marcy, do you have a really fancy pen we can all use, like dip it in?
I'll get one.
Feathered pen. I think that's awesome. I'm, I'm excited to sign that. Speaking of signs, I know Josh hit on this, that new sign outside looks awesome. Congratulations to everybody who's been working on that. Jason came up and talked about the Michigan Green Communities Award. We do have a five-year goal to reach Gold status, so if you're jealous of those twenty-two communities that are ahead of us, that is a five-year goal of ours. Very much looking forward to the Music, Food, and Fun Series that Teresa's hosting, always a great time. And then the last thing I wanted to ask about is if we have a council spot in the parade this year? And if not, I would love to be part of volunteering for that. You know, Randy in the past has secured a vehicle from Boardman. They have a lot of cool stuff over there now. Maybe we can get something super fun, but I'd love to be a part of that if that's an option that council desires. That's it for me. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I have nothing to add, except, yeah, I'd like to be in the parade, so that's at least two of us, and maybe going forward, we can see how many others want to participate, but we could be an entry. I'm on the Fourth of July Committee, obviously, and so is Marcy. And actually, Marcy, do you know where we are in parade entries, or how many we have right now?
We've got a few more today. I think it's around forty right now.
Okay, okay.
Which is-
A little better.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They'll start coming in more now.
A few weeks ago, but, okay. That's all, yeah. Thanks.
JR touched on most everything. I had, I have one question for Chief May. The cause of the fire on, off of Fortia on Antigo, I think is?
Yeah, believed to be a battery charger for like a twenty-volt garden tool type thing.
No kidding.
I can't tell you for sure if it was a charger or the battery, but that's the direction they're headed with that.
Mainly garage, right?
Yeah.
Justin? Nothing for me. Josh?
I was just gonna say, you know, a couple weeks ago, it was Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurse Appreciation Week, and we're wrapping up the school year in the next couple weeks with a lot of the schools around here, and it's just an opportunity to say thanks to all the teachers and the school administrators. We've got a lot of great schools around here, and they work really hard to provide a good education to our kids, and, you know, whether it be the public schools or the private schools, you know, we've got a good community education program here. And just appreciate the teachers and everybody that is working in the schools and what they do. It's been another challenging year, you know, starting out with COVID and going through a big surge over the winter and all of that, and, you know, it's just not, not easy to keep everything going, I'm sure, and, you know, working with kids, being out sick, and doing virtual learning and all that stuff. So just appreciated. And I have kids in school, and I appreciate what they do, so. That's it. Thanks.
Randy?
JR, thank you for the heads up about the car. Wasn't even on the radar map, but it is now, so I'll reach out to him. I'm assuming most people are gonna walk, though, if they're in the parade?
Yeah. That's it.
Okay. The only thing I have is kind of follow-up on the Music, Food, and Fun events that are going to be in the new downtown area. Help me out, Marcy or Ken, there's going to be a dedication of that facility and kind of a tribute to Rick Bullhaus and DDA, and that, June seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
First, it's the first day of the Farmers Market.
Okay.
But it's at ten-thirty in the morning, I think, is that right?
So just kind of save the date time for that, so.
Ten-thirty?
Yeah. And that's all I've got. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Right, thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight.